President of EWEB Board, I'm going to bring the May, February 4th meeting to order. First off, I'm going to do a little bit of a facility and safety awareness for staff and our public guests. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting. EWEB manager, management and subject matter experts are present in the room and virtually. The meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. Please speak loudly and clearly so everyone can hear you. Public testimony is welcome. There's signup forms available at the back of the room. Visitor access is limited to the board meeting and the restrooms. Restrooms are located on the first floor through the door. In the event of an emergency such as a fire or a security incident, follow all instructions given by staff. And if, if an evacuation is required, please calmly proceed to the nearest safe exit and go to the place that the staff directs you to. So. With that, we'll start with our first agenda item, which is the agenda check. Does any of the commissioners want to change or amend the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to items from board members and general manager. Commissioner Carlson.
Just wanted to let all of you know that ElCog is currently accepting actions. They extended the due date until February 10th for applications for their awards ceremony that happens, the annual ElCog dinner, and that's coming up on March 7th. But the nomination for elected official, public employee, businesses, nonprofit, citizens, residents, more. What their, the website says, is that it's open until next Monday. So I just wanted to let you know about that. If there's somebody you'd like to recognize, think they deserve a little attention and recognition, please submit the form by next Monday.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, three things. Thank you. Number one, I'd like to commend staff and everybody associated with College Hill and that process. So far, so good. I mean, I'm really impressed with the fact that we've gone in there done all that demolition, that excavation. And so far, I even know it's not my word, my phone hasn't rang. And I think great job. You guys are doing a wonderful job. And thanks for baking coffee to Coffee Before. A couple other things, um, just thinking out loud for, you know, logistics. We're going to be taking on a Willamette watershed here pretty soon about restoring and everything. And I would think, and if others want to think about it as a tour to see that entire watershed, Row River, Coast Fork, Crestwell Sewer Treatment, all the dairies, everything that's going to affect our water up there. And there's only one way to do it. If we don't want to spend a week doing it, that's by air. And I think just look in the logistics of, of the cost and whether or not we could do it. But it would, I think it would give you a good perspective to see exactly just how expensive that watershed is. The proximity of the coast fork to Short Mountain and Leech Eight, and all these things that are going to be, we're going to be aware of, and we're going to have to treat to keep our water quality the way it is. So just planting that seed. And lastly, um, the fire service fee. I know the council is going to make a decision here shortly. And whether or not they refer it to the voters or not, they're, they're still going to try and put it on the EWEB bill. And I for one, don't want to have to make a decision to do that on short notice because they have a budget that they have to get passed. And, you know, for us to put a non-EWEB related cost, a general fund cost on an EWEB bill and subject people being shut off for not paying their bill because they're, to me is, you're going to have to have a discussion with me to get me to say that's okay to do because once that starts, it's forever. And it's at the discretion of the city manager and they can raise that however they want. And I'm, but I just want to keep utilities, utilities and not start putting other charges on EWEB bill. So I, I think that it would behoove us to have that conversation because it's coming. And we don't even have it on the agenda. And doesn't the budget, John, the budget has to be done by July? And so, um, look at, look at the time we don't have. And maybe we schedule one of our work sessions or something for it because if others, if two other head nods want to do that, I think we, we should have that discussion and tell the council what, where we're leaning on whether or not, um, we're going to be their collection agency.
Other commissioners, Commissioner Morris.
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to echo, um, the College Hill. Work has been incredible. I think the community has stayed informed. I went to a neighborhood association meeting and there were very few questions about it, which I think is an incredible outcome. So, um, great job, kudos. I also, um, wanted to mention last month, I had the opportunity to go to the Hayden Bridge Water Filtration Plant, which was incredible. Staff was so unbelievably knowledgeable and it was, it was really great. And they mentioned that they do tours of that facility as well. I didn't quite catch exactly when, but for anyone who's listening or anyone who's interested, I strongly recommend, I think it's, it's very easy to forget that when you turn on the tap water, the water comes out clean and, and how much of intentional processes behind that and, and just so much work. So, um, great job up at the staff, uh, over there. And then finally, and this is a, a repeat, um, conversation I continue to have with members of the public, but there are few people who accidentally leave their sprinklers on or leave, you know, generators running. And then they get a phone call from EWEB saying, hey, your, your usage is a little high this month. What's going on? And I, it's just such a great outreach and proactive approach to our engagement as a public utility. I think it's just incredible. It's, I, I hear often of the many, many positives and negatives about EWEB, but that one just continues to come up of, of what a great idea, what a great process. So, um, again, thank you to, to staff for, for that. And whoever made that suggestion in, in the workroom. I hope that they're sleeping very, very well at night because the community appreciates them. So, check. Thank you.
All right. Uh, I don't have anything for, at this time, uh, general manager.
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. Um, I just have one thing I wanted to mention. I did have the opportunity and wanted to, to appreciate Commissioner Carlson for her invitation to meet with, um, herself and other members of the community to talk about the Bring Rethink program. It does fit quite nicely with a lot of the things that EWEB is doing around energy efficiency. And appreciate the opportunity to, to brainstorm with her and the mayor and other agencies around what we can do to help the community, um, through that program and, and through the other things that we do. And there's, there's more to come there, but wanted to appreciate you for the invitation and we'll continue to work through our customer solutions group to, uh, figure out how our products and services can be adapted to just be that much more effective. So, thank you, Commissioner.
Nobody else from second round? Okay.
Yes, I have a process question. I kind of threw it out there to see if I could get two other people on the board want to discuss the fire service fee and whether or not it's going to be put on the EWEB bill in, in the next month or two, because it's, we don't have much room on any calendars or any schedules. And if we're going to do that, I'd just like to know yes or no.
Well, okay, I'll let, uh.
I was just going to say that, um, if commissioners wanted to, uh, inject that into the, any of the meetings coming up. We saved, you know, half hour, 45 minutes within those as we balanced out, um, the board agenda report and calendar for the rest of the year. We could facilitate it really at any time. Based on staff readiness and then commissioner readiness. We don't know all the details of what their request would look like. The, um, instructions that I had from this board were that, um, there was some interest if the overall was benefit, was a benefit to the community because it was more efficient. But that, uh, it was certainly from my perspective, because of its profile and impact long-term, it was a board decision. So, I will double check, uh, with, with, um, city manager Maderi as well as staff to see if we know more details. I suspect, um, within the next month or so, we, we would be able to prepare for that discussion.
Yeah, I would just want to weigh in on this. So I think next the February 10th, so that's the next Wednesday, uh, council's set to take a vote on whether or not to lean that way or, or not lean that way. Um, I think it would behoove us to wait till at least that, that vote happens. And then we could have a preliminary, in my view, a preliminary conversation about it. But until all the details are worked out, I mean, there's going to be, from what was presented to us in our liaison meetings, there was going to be some sort of, uh, low income assistance that would be tagged to those fees and stuff. So I think that yes, I really think a robust, uh, conversation on this is happening, but I think it's a little early until we decide, they decide whether or not we're going to have it or. Commissioner Slossberg.
Later on tonight, we're going to talk about some of our goals that we want to work on in terms of our work with the city. And I think that this would be a great goal to add then and to talk about not just this fire fee, but just in general, the city, like the stormwater fees and how that affects our customers with their bills. So I think that it's a great idea and that we, we can address it.
Commissioner Carlson.
And I, I, I would like to have the conversation if it thinks like, if, if it seems like the thing has legs and it's going to be moving forward. I mean, obviously then I want to discuss it, but I know, I don't think that it, I think it's premature to do anything unless we actually have the details. If we have, um, and I think we can, we can put something on the agenda. Vice President and President can put something on the agenda pretty quickly, or we could pull together a work session if it became something that we needed to. So I'm, I'm supportive if it's something that looks like it's going to move.
Right.
Yeah, thank you. I was just, for a piece of context, I, I do believe that, that the city is aware, um, that while we are obligated, uh, through city code to act as the collection agent for stormwater fees and wastewater fees, this is purely voluntary, uh, on the, the part of the EWEB board. It is not an obligation through code. And so, um, the decision to do that or not is definitely falls back on the shoulders of this board if they should decide to pursue a city fee. And would ask EWEB to be the collection agent for that.
Okay. That okay with you?
Yeah, just for the record, I'm, everybody refers to it as a fire fee. I did too, you know, out of the 10 million, 2 million goes to fire. It's a general fund. And so I think it's a misnomer to say it's a fire fee. It's a, it's a general fund fee. And so just clarification.
Very good. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is, uh, public input. There is a public input preamble up on the, on the board. If you haven't signed up, there are signup forms in the back. We'll take them until the end of this goes. So I'm going to open up the public comment session. Right now, we have three people signed up. The first is KGN. KGN, you'll have three minutes to speak, uh, and you'll hear a beep when your time is up. You'll need to hit star six to unmute. KGN, are you with us? Okay, I'll come back to you if you're still with us. You'll be third in, in the queue. We'll move on to the sex one, the second one, which is Max Liebrich. Max. Hi, Max.
My name is Max Liebrich. I'm here to, uh, complain for myself about the EWEB billing, the new accounting system you have. Prior to the new billing, you had 11 characters I had to fill in in order to pay my account. Now I have 12 characters to fill in, 12 mistakes I can make now instead of just 11. I cannot figure that you have 110, sorry, 210 million accounts out there. It seems like you got some housecleanings to do to make this a little simpler. It would be really nice and be old and everything if I can just put in my address in some way, shape or form to get to my accounts. Presently, I have apartment buildings and I take over vacant units and those end up on my account. And I can't find them, so I have to do, do each one by a guest to pay. When I go into guest pay, it tells me to register as if a regular person. A portal, I'm going, can we just make this stuff simple? That's all I'm asking. It'd get easier for me to pay my bills. Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Isaac McCoy. Sorry, I butchered it and you can correct me.
Solentik.
Okay.
It seemed like the time to talk about the fire fee was back in November when Ms. Maderi and Neil came. And it seemed like they gave this presentation like they were trying to sell the plan, but I think the topic was the billing. I think it would have been helpful to have the billing conversation a little more out in the open then. And EWEB doesn't have any political dog in that fight, even though I know there are politics at play. Anyway, just a thought. Uh, I was listening to the December conversation about rate design. And one of the slides mentioned that, um, EWEB really needs engaged consumers, uh, to reward them for beneficial behavior. It's a little, there seems to be some natural, um, tension in most utilities between beneficial behavior and the bottom line of the utility. Mr. Lawson mentioned that inefficient houses subsidize their neighbors in the current rate structure because it shares a higher percentage of the fixed costs. And I think as we look forward to rate design, it would be good to figure out and modify the rate design so that it empowers consumers to be efficient, to engage in solar where appropriate. Well, obviously not threatening the bottom line of, of EWEB. But it seems that that comment Mr. Lawson made about, you know, the current rate structure seems to sort of explain that current solar program is sort of disincentivizing consumers. And I understand there's lots of complex issues there. But I think going forward as we, we have smart meters for how many years now? And I hope time of use pricing can come online sooner. Batteries are coming. You know, we built hundreds of thousands of square feet of really nice access, new roofs in the school districts in the last few years. And it seems like we could leverage things, you know, on the, on the local side. I think it dovetails nicely with what it seems like the board is moving forward with the BPA decision about having a more flexible solution. And I think if we can empower the community to be engaged, it will benefit everybody in the end. I understand efficiency costs the utility at some point. But then at some point, like during the heat wave, we ask for it by turning down your, I mean, it's all kind of the same thing, right? Efficiency solar, me going on vacation, it's all kind of shows to the meter, kind of similarly, it seems like. The analysts, some of the analysts have noted that, uh, there seems to be a pretty big deficit with, between the projected low growth in the Northwest and what BPA's capacity and plans to bring things online, or I think all the more reason to just create every little bit that we can locally. So anyway, I hope you would consider a rate design that really empowers consumers to be involved and be engaged. Well, of course, keeping EWEB the button, the balance, the budget balance.
Great. Thank you. All right, we will go back to KGN. KGN, have you had the opportunity to weigh in? All right, going, going. KGN, can you try hitting star six to unmute? We still see you on the line. Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
No. All right. Okay. Sorry, I didn't, all right. So, um, I wanted to talk today about the $5 rate fee and the rate increases. When the rate increase was discussed by Commissioner Carlson said something to the effect of, we need to do something for the people. This is going to impact. And now we have Commissioner Morris on the board too. And, uh, Commissioner Morris, you ran on making EWEB fair for everyone. I will champion policies that protect ratepayers, ensuring fair and just treatment for all Eugenians regardless of their financial circumstances. That's from your website. So I'm glad that you're in there now and that you won. Um, now that we got you here, it's not fair in several ways. And so I'm going to talk about the late fees slash core tax. The, the rate increases have been made up. But the amount that the people get for CARES is the exact same. Like I knew y'all didn't do the full 15% like you talked about, but still it's an increase. The calls have increased. I know for the CARES thing, like yesterday, the website didn't work. And the phone didn't work. And that was, I believe, the most that y'all have had for that, or at least it was a lot more than was expected. And there was, uh, like it just did not function at all for hours. And the $5 rate fees, I mean, they're a core tax. And the way they're rationalizing them is like motivating people to pay their bills on time is absurd. Like that logic just doesn't stand up. Trust, like there's, trust me, the threat of shut off shortly followed by eviction in less than a month of payment is sufficient enough that everyone who can pay their bill will pay their bill. It's not the $5 rate fee. It's just a tax on poor people. The only people who are getting hit with that are the people who already barely have anything. The only, the people that is something too. And it's like, it takes too much from the community to like as a whole, when you think about like 18% of Eugene's population is below the poverty line. And for most of us, if, maybe if we get the CARE Act, but if we don't, then it's like $60 a year for a lot of people. Or like 45, or you know, even less now because the rates gone up, the CARES thing go up. And, or so, I know CARES is like donations. So if you're not going to increase that, like get rid of that late fee. Do something like, it's small, it's not much. But with y'all, with all that we're, the community gives to EWEB, like it should be easy to do. Working class people need every dollar to stay in their community they can and just if you just get like that money somewhere else. I mean, I'm guessing it's like around, I don't know, like how many ratepayers you actually have. I know like what Eugene's population is. So like, but that's $5 per person in poverty. That's probably like a hundred thousand dollars a year or something coming out from the lower class community. And that's not much. Sure, but it's lost the lower class community and like $60 a year is a lot. And then just finally about like the fire fee. Yeah, it should just be honest. If it's a general fund fee, say that it's a general fund fee.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, KGA. Your, your three minutes is up, but thank you for testifying.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right. Are there any other people to testify? Okay, with that, I will close the public testimony and ask board members if there's any comments or questions. Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for coming up. Um, Max, if you want to give your contact info to and you maybe have a dialogue with them. I know we've got thousands of apartment units here in Eugene and I, that's the first I've heard of an issue, but maybe they can talk to you and see if they can work something out. Isaac, thank you very much. I appreciate public testimony, but I really appreciate it when it's informed. And you've, you've done some homework. Thank you very much. Time of use and things like that. And, and I, I really appreciate that. And keep it up. We appreciate input like that. So thank you very much.
Other commissioners, Commissioner Slossberg.
Thank you, everyone who came to testify, um, tonight. And I just have a question, Frank. If we, um, I know occasionally we get reports on, um, our low income assistance programs and kind of the statistics behind it. And I'm just, I don't know if that's like something that's scheduled regularly or, if not, if we could just get some more information because it would be really helpful to know, kind of the state of that and how, I'm curious how many people do end up getting their power shut off. Just some statistics around that would maybe help us understand more. Thank you.
Commissioner Carlson.
Similar topic. Um, I also wanted to find out in the data request side of things, if we could get, uh, a sense of how many people actually pay the rate, the late fee and if, um, the customer service staff are empowered to be able to waive those if people proactively reach out and, you know, set up payment plans, because I know that we have a, a kind of a set monthly payment plan that people can opt into. So it makes their bills a lot less, um, volatile. Thanks.
This, our general manager.
I'm not a commissioner yet, um, probably won't be.
I'm new at this game.
I appreciate it. We, we will provide, um, statistics and data, uh, next month as part of our year end recap. So we'll, um, normally we would do that in our quarterly reporting. Next month happens to be the 2024 year end report. And so we'll include, uh, statistics and information on limited income support and, uh, how the program is, is working and whatever data we can get associated with that commissioners. I would also, um, just note, um, that the limited income program, um, was part of the, uh, goals discussion, um, that we'll have later. And in fact, recognizing that, uh, there is more opportunity to look at that and how we do it. It's something we've been thinking about how we, uh, serve that part of our market, that part of our customer base. And so that'll be part of our goals discussion, discussion later. And I'll give you a little bit more background as, as far as where and how we wanted to go with that.
I just wanted to say, uh, thanks to everybody for, for testifying. Max, thank you for coming out. You know, we, we just implemented this whole new software and customer portals. And the only way that we really can figure out the, the bugs to it is by interacting with our customers who are using it. You know, we can't run through every single scenario when we test it. And, uh, this is the best type of, uh, testing that we can have. So hopefully we'll be able to come to some sort of a resolution that can fix it. If not, I apologize for it, but it's the time we live in and, you know, every time I have to change my password and add 17 more characters, I curse it just like, like you did. So know that we are listening to you and we'll do our best to see if we can accommodate it. But that's one of the little niches. It's like, oh, somebody who's got, you know, 75 door fronts that are all on different accounts is a scenario that we may not have run the, run through. And getting input like that is very valuable. So thank you for coming out. Anybody else? Okay. Then we'll, next item is moving on to correspondence.
Yes, commissioners, uh, there were four items of correspondence in the, uh, public board packet, uh, presented, um, that came out last week. The first one I'll really talk about later, uh, when we're talking about the, the timing and the framing of the Bonneville decision and the product options that we have, uh, relative to that. This was just a piece of information relative to the timing of that decision and the, uh, interaction with the board. The bylaws review is, is a requirement that we have to go through, um, on an, on an annual basis or periodic basis. There's really only one minor update unless commissioners had something more that they wanted to bring forth. That was a reference to a particular statute, um, that has been revised, uh, since then. Third item of correspondence, um, is, uh, just referenced back to the resiliency policy that the board passed. And, um, the process of which we are, uh, implementing some of those items. There are four different, uh, portions to the resiliency policy. Uh, one or two of those are actually included in the 2025, uh, annual goals that, that we discussed last month. But the, uh, material that was presented in correspondence highlighted a few of the other projects that we're working on as an organization. Everything from, um, things like College Hill to, um, emergency water sites to other sorts of infrastructure. And then the last one, uh, which is maybe in some cases the most dynamic is, uh, Jason Hughes's legislative update. This time of year, uh, typically thousands of potential bills introduced in Salem, um, of which we are monitoring which ones will be shaken out, which ones have the potential to impact us, uh, in what ways and which ones we should, uh, simply be monitoring versus supporting or opposing. That is, um, at the direction of the board, which originally starts in December with your legislative agenda items. So those were the items. We do have staff available. If you have any questions, some of these topics will be covered later in our agenda items, but, uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Much as I love acronyms, which CRUP stand for?
That's a good, uh, hey, Jason. We have ADA, another darn acronym. Um.
Yeah, Frank, uh, I got it right here. It's the Community Renewable Energy Program.
Thank you.
It's, it's, uh, also a resiliency program.
Thank you.
So R could have two meanings in that case.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Carlson.
On the state legislative agenda, obviously, there's a number of bills that are on there, and it's hard to say which way some of these will go, but I noticed that there were many of them where we're just kind of a watch and wait and see. And I just wondered if, um, kind of two things. One, if we would get, like, an update if some of those do get traction, and if, um, it warrants more of our input or support or lack thereof, and then if we're going to do a, um, I know there's some discussion about doing a kind of day at the Capitol sort of thing. I just wondered if these raise to the, the level of what we need to do if a lot of them are watching them. Um, so, my two thoughts. Thanks.
Yeah, I think we have regular updates planned, um, in particular if something were to change, um, outside of just the general, in particular, the general direction that the board's provided. I do believe the legislative, um, trip was, is, is or was originally scheduled for mid-March at some point, um, where you'll get an opportunity to, to work with Jason on particular items. Some of these are, are watched, uh, simply because, um, there may be an indirect interest that we have. Some of them might apply to investor-owned utilities and not consumer-owned utilities. So there's, um, whether those make it through committee and actually get, get discussed, that's in some reasons why we, we have a, uh, just a monitor on those.
Thank you.
Um, I put myself in the queue. Jason, I, uh, I heard tell of a, a bill that is being sponsored by Representative Fragalot, and it has to do with the Mackenzie River Trust and something about being able to put lands into trust without, uh, without so much of the, uh, red tape and stuff like that. Is that something that you're following and we should weigh in on? It seems like it's in our wheelhouse.
Uh, yes, Commissioner, uh, you, you are correct. Um, the Mackenzie River Trust has brought that bill forward. Uh, the bill actually was heard in committee yesterday, and we did have a letter of support, uh, from E-Web, uh, for that, that measure. Um, essentially, uh, there's been a couple of transactions, conservation, um, parcels that, uh, did not have legally determined lot lines, and it's a, a very onerous process to get that corrected. Um, it can create, uh, potential liability for sellers that, um, often can frankly jeopardize a transaction. Um, so the, the bill is incredibly narrow and, uh, surgical and only applies to land acquired for conservation purposes by a public benefit corporation, which is essentially like a five oh one C three, so MRT, uh, easily fits in that definition. Uh, it creates a, um, uh, basically a way to indemnify, uh, the seller, um, from any consequences, uh, that could result from the transaction, uh, and it also requires that the deed records that it's for conservation purposes. So, uh, well, I don't, we probably shouldn't try to make it any more complicated than that. At the end of the day, it's really going to help, um, these, these very narrow scope transactions for conservation purposes and, uh, could help, uh, protect, uh, transactions from going sideways. Could help us avoid potentially losing, uh, grant funding that's been awarded, um, it, it, when a transaction's delayed. So, great bill. Um, we may want to find out if, uh, E-Web could avail ourselves to it in the future. Uh, well, we'll see how it goes, uh, getting this bill passed for MRT. And we are supporting it.
Okay. Yeah, that was something that, that was brought up. It, it, it added almost a year and a half to the, the Quartz Creek restoration because of the, the legal things that they had to go through to acquire the property, which is a willing seller and a willing buyer, but the, the, uh, land use laws made it hard. So anything we can do to help shepherd that one forward, I think, would be appropriate. Anybody else on correspondence? Yes, Commissioner Carlson.
So I had one other question on the, um, the bylaw review. Uh, is there a state, uh, definition for attendance uh, coming out of COVID? Because it, it doesn't define that attendance could be online and in person. And I'm not sure if we need to codify that, or if that's kind of already generally accepted in, um, in other statutes, but that was one thing I noticed.
I'll take a review, take a look at that, Commissioner Carlson, relative to whether that has to be specifically stated in the bylaws. There, there are, um, there have been interpretations since COVID that attendance can be virtual or in person. There are rules around providing access to individuals, uh, relative to testimony and their attendance. Um, but whether that has to be included in the bylaws, we'll double check on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you for everybody. Jason, you can say and watch the rest of this exciting meeting. Or you can move on. All right. Next is the, uh, approval of Consent Calendar A.
Move to adopt Consent Calendar A.
Moved and by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Stossberg. All in favor or discussion, I think. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Item six is approval of Consent Calendar B.
Move to adopt Consent Calendar B.
Moved by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Stossberg. Any discussion?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Carlson.
I just have one question about the, um, the difference in the project scope. I know, or not scope, but the, um, cost. I know when we did the two up on, um, on Forteth and Patterson, um, just looking at the data, it was, you know, a lower cost, and I know if most of that was due to, um, kind of different design, or if it was, um, more because it's just the cost of everything now is so much higher, and I just wondered if somebody could speak to that a little bit.
I'd be happy to defer to the project engineer on that specifically. It, it, it didn't seem that much different, but you can come up here.
I don't need to. Can everyone hear me?
Uh, come on up and record it. Press the green button. Or the right button. There you go.
Great question. Thank you. So we, um, the scope is a little bit different just because of the transmission piping to get the water into the tanks. Uh, Lincoln Street is pretty narrow in that section, um, and the piping is very deep. So because of that, it's about thirty feet deep at the top of the hill. So we have, uh, went through an evaluation and decided to use a tunneling technique, so it'll bore under the road. Um, just because it's safer. Uh, that did add about four million, well, it didn't add, but it, that cost about four million dollars compared to the open trench at Patterson, which was, I think, around two and a half million. And then the rest is just due to inflation and bidding climate. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Brown.
I'd just like to come, but compliment you on the bidding process, to see how close the bids were, you know, within ten percent. And, you know, a twenty-five million dollar contract is big, and I'm glad to see we, the local company got it and everything else. So again, kudos to do that, and as long as you continue, good, good work. You did a great job on Patterson, and you, so far, I think you did a great job on College Hill.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I just want to also comment on the fact that these are major infrastructure projects that we've been tackling over the last few years. And it's, it by no means goes past our, our view that we're approving a contract for twenty-five million dollars. We, we look into that and realize that that's a lot of our ratepayers' money, and we take it very seriously, but we also know that it's vital to the, to the community for generations to come, and we're doing our best to sharpen our pencil wherever we can. So thank you. Anybody else? Chris. General Manager.
President, President Borowski, thank you. Um, I just wanted to point out from a process perspective, just, just so commissioners know why this was left in, um, Consent Calendar B. Typically, something at this level, we would pull out and do separately on its own. Um, however, since it was the only item in Consent Calendar B this month, uh, we figured that it was an opportunity to just highlight it and call it out, uh, under, under that particular structure. But in the future, if things get to a point or something significant from a community perspective or from a dollars perspective, uh, we'll probably have a separate, um, line item with, within the Consent Calendar allocated time, but we'll pull that out as a, as a separate item. But I just wanted to make a note, that's why it was, it was left in Consent Calendar B as it was the only thing, but, uh, there'll be some procedural changes, um, to note going forward.
Thank you. All right. So we've had, uh, motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Thank you. Moving on to item eight, Annual Goals, Amendments and Additions. General Manager Lawson.
President Borowski, Commissioners, good evening. I, I did want to make a note, just, I, I know that, that Laura's in the back, and you complimented her on the project management aspect of that. The projects that she's been working on. I also wanted to just compliment and, um, and recognize our communications staff, um, that has also done a tremendous amount of outreach on that particular project and the project before. Um, I get weekly, I think it's weekly updates, just as a member of the general public, um, as well as I get other updates, um, um, being an internal employee, but I wanted to compliment all of the different types of outreach that they've done on this project and and facilitated the answering of many questions so that, so that you don't have to when you, uh, go to a meeting. So appreciate that. Thank you to them. I did want to, uh, talk about, uh, for the record, audio record, since Frank Lawson, General Manager, wanted to talk a little bit about uh, some revisions and additions to the annual goals. Um, just, uh, to recall, we talked about some of the themes that we were looking at for twenty twenty-five in December of last year. Um, in January last month, we, um, presented, um, uh, the results of the conversation with the board, um, around seven, um, organizational goals for twenty twenty-five. Um, you approved those goals, um, but also, uh, directed myself to look into one additional goal relative to the uh, opportunities that we might see for energy efficiency projects in the, um, rental stock in, in Eugene. Um, in reviewing, um, the goals, um, as they existed, uh, we wanted to propose this evening for your consideration, a revision to uh, one of the goals relative to our limited income programs. When we originally presented this last month, we, we talked about specifically, uh, looking at the impact and the reach of the E-Web Customer Care Program. And I think if you recall, I said that the Customer Care Program is a, is a pretty blunt instrument in how we use it. It's basically, uh, we, um, help certain customers meeting an income qualification. It's, it's the same amount. Um, there's some review that we could do on how we improve that program. Um, but working with staff, uh, we didn't want to limit our discussions to just the E-Web, um, Customer Care Program. We wanted to look at this holistically across the other limited income programs, which include, we have special incentives for energy efficiency and conservation that are also based on, on income. And so our proposal this evening would be to revise this to be, uh, more holistic and more inclusive to our, our total limited income programs, not just E-Web Customer Care. And then in the same, uh, type of concept, we didn't want to look just at prepay, where we would look at opportunities for people to waive deposits, uh, pay as you go. You know, it's easier to pay twenty dollars at a time if that's what you have. Uh, we wanted to actually look at this as payment programs generically prepay of which could be one of the options that we create. So our, our proposal would be to modify the language around our limited income programs to be, uh, more inclusive than just looking at two programs as they exist today. The other, uh, goal, which is, um, a new goal, it'll be, uh, goal number eight, um, would be to, uh, look at, uh, understanding the, and creating what I would call the jump-off point for where we are with energy efficiency and conservation programs with our uh, rental stock, um, use the results of our demand-side potential assessment study, which is occurring right now. Uh, we're starting to get some of the results there. Uh, use that to then develop some specific, um, outcomes that we're looking for with commissioners um, that would drive, again, a more effective, a more impactful program, uh, specifically to address, um, targeted direction with our, uh, rental stock, a segment of our community. Um, this, this goal, um, is not a typical goal in the sense that it says we're going to go from X percent to Y percent. Uh, this is more of a process goal. It's really to look at the factual information that we have, then use that information to develop where we are and understand where we are and where we'd like to go, work with the board on that, and then develop an action plan to pursue that. So um, we tried to walk a little bit of a fine line, um, between, uh, the comments last month, and then also our history, knowing that we have done uh, some work with rental stocks historically, uh, but then also using factual information and data to, to drive what our next actions are going to be. And so this is, this is the result of, uh, a number of different, um, wordsmithing exercises to develop a goal that we thought would satisfy your direction and also give us enough direction internally. And so, um, just, just to recap, um, uh, as we go through the goals and trying to make sure, uh, these, these align with a number of the different objectives of the organization. Um, sorry, this is sideways, Commissioner Carlson. Uh, I saw you, you tilting your head. Um, when we look at sort of the major, um, initiatives and organizational priorities, um, many of those are around, um, optimizing our, our energy, and I mean, the rate design was mentioned earlier. I was actually excited to hear somebody who likes rate design as, as much as Brian does. I think there's a lot of opportunities that are going to come out of that. Uh, also, resiliency work. And then a recognition that part of our mission is the day in and day out, uh, three sixty-five, twenty-four seven, delivery of, of two essential services to a community that's pretty diverse. And so, um, uh, mapping those back, the goals back to which of these they support, we think is something that we should regularly be doing. And with that, commissioners, I just open it up for any conversations, any discussions, direction, and/or potential uh, approval or modified approval of the goals as presented. President Borowski.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments? Commissioner Carlson.
Well, thank you, since I'm the one that sparked off the, uh, the start of this. I really appreciate the staff went through the, the motion to look at not only, um, what I wanted to do is improve it, but look at what is the current state. And that really gets at what, um, what the motion or what the, uh, updated organizational goal is. I think it, it gives us the potential to see where we're currently at, so then we can decide where we need to go. And I, and I really appreciate that uh, nuance to what I brought up last time. So thank you for addressing that. I, um, would be happy to move to adopt the revisions to twenty twenty-five, uh, annual organizational goals as directed by the board and presented by management.
Sarah Second. Right, Scottson. Commissioner Stossberg, then Morris.
Um, well, I know we're going to vote on this in just a minute, but I'm very supportive of both of these, and I'm also very, um, appreciative that we are adopting these two organizational goals that really target our most vulnerable customers, both of them do, in different ways, and, um, I'm just really happy to see us do that.
Commissioner Morris.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I want to echo the sentiment, um, that there's an intentionality of supporting those most vulnerable in our community, and I see that reflected here, and I want to, um, specifically highlight under Goal Four, that change. Um, and I want to emphasize, uh, how important, I think, um, the line of new potential payment options such as. And I think that that opens up E-Web to explore more options. It's not hampering or limiting. And so I, I just want to, um, share, share my appreciation of that, and, um, I think that my, my perspective last meeting is, is reflected right here. So I, I support this, and, um, I appreciate Zach working on this. Thank you.
Okay. I know there's more. Okay, I know there's a motion on the floor and we're on discussion, but we kind of jumped it pretty quickly. So if there's more discussion that you guys want to have, we have plenty of time in this agenda item. Thank you for bringing these forward. I'm I'm happy you you heard what we said as a board last month. I I think we are all in alignment with trying to to achieve goal eight and goal four, all of our goals were were aligned to that. But being a new goal and goal eight. I'm just wondering. You mentioned we're going to do the, we're going to have the results of the demand side potential assessment coming in. I'm wondering when we think that will happen. And then the other thing that I was wondering is is there a timeline for us to develop that an action plan to to achieve this goal? I'm not saying that we have to have it there, but just in in the back of your mind and the back and the amount of work that staff has, you know, is this a something we'll be seeing later on in this year? Is this a year and a half, two years before we kind of actually see an action plan on this? Just just a guess would be what I was hoping for here.
A guess. Well, I'll give you more than a guess. So but you asked two questions. One of them, the demand side potential assessment is actually on the agenda for the work session in March. And so that will be the basis as to how it applies directly to the Bonneville decision. A number of these goals actually are complementary from a workflow and a staff perspective. I think when we look at customer programs, we look at at rate design, we look at the Bonneville decision, certain segments of of the population that we serve, those are, those are all complementary. Our intent would be to have an initial action plan developed by the end of the year based on the assessments that Commissioner Carlson referenced. Also having some discussions with the board around, okay, once we know where we are, where is a reasonable path to go? And then we can develop the specific action plans that fall from that. So I would expect that to happen this year. The goal eight has not been fully implemented into the board agenda report yet. We put some placeholders in there. But I would need to get with Julie McGahey and staff and some others just to specifically develop some some more definitive meeting times around that. But our our intent would be have an action plan by the end of the year.
Fabulous. That's that's very exciting. Other questions or comments on this agenda item? All right, there is a motion on the on the floor by Commissioner Carlson, seconded by Commissioner Schlossberg. Any further discussion? Hey, all in favor? Say aye. Aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. I can, I have to say after last, after last month's meeting, I wasn't quite quite clear where I was going to take this. But I think with staff's help, we and your guidance, we got a good start on it. From, thank you.
From the amount of discussion that was given to you, I think you landed it pretty good. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, next up is break. Or no, oh, go BPA goal three. Sorry. That's that's used to stay there. Unless you want to take the break.
I'd have to ask Commissioner Brown's approval to take a break at this point. So commissioners, really appreciate the opportunity again to talk to you about an upcoming upcoming decision that we have as a utility that has pretty wide ranging and long lasting impacts on our utility, on our staff and on the community. I wanted to go through roughly with you this evening, the the remaining timeline, how we're looking at approaching the decision. It was included in the background or roughly a description of what staff's role, management's role would be and what the board's role would be. Also, we recognize that there's an incredible amount of analysis and reporting and details and contract details that go into this decision. And at the same time, looking to you for guidance and direction so that we can understand which details to to pursue, which data to pursue, and what you'd be interested in knowing about this decision in order to make a recommendation and provide guidance. So we'll go through roughly the timeframe, how we're looking at the recommendation that we will present to the board in June and then discuss. Like to get your feedback on anything that you think we're missing, questions that you might foresee coming and any comments on the process itself. So this is an updated schedule. There's a number of different board meetings that we have scheduled for touch points with commissioners. You'll see mid March, there's the demand side potential assessment. That particular meeting will focus on what we see from a energy efficiency conservation side relative to using it as a resource to offset load. We will include some discussion around the breakdown of the segments, but that is really a discussion around what we see as the potential and the cost of that potential to offset other types of resources that we would need to acquire or procure from Bonneville or others. We'll also provide the modeling results to the board in May and some additional sort of leanings toward our recommendations of the different product options. If you recall, there's there's roughly three or four different product selection options from Bonneville. And then there are some additional flavors of those those options that we've we've presented in the past. Probably the sort of the big meeting here will be in as a work session in June where you will hear management's full recommendation for the Bonneville product option choice. Bonneville really refers to this as provider, their provider of choice contract. So this is how they they've referred to it. But that will be, you'll, you'll get our recommendation as to where we think the organization should go. And then a few weeks after that in July, we would submit the request for a resolution authorizing the general manager to sign and negotiate such a contract that's consistent with that recommendation or any modifications that you would like to have to that recommendation. So there's a, there's a combined role in that between staff, modeling, analysis, qualitative feedback and direction from the board. The things that we'll be considering as we go through, our recommendation covers a number of different different areas, kind of classified this in three ways. The first is to look at the portfolio economics. And so this is really looking at the cost, the projected cost of the Bonneville contract over a 20 year view. It is also inclusive that we recognize that we have to supplement that contract with other resources in order to fulfill our obligation to serve load in the community. And so it's, there's different flavors of the Bonneville contract that would require us to procure more or less or different types of resources. So this is a a view of the cost relative to all of those resources, not just the Bonneville resource, but also any that we would have to procure. And then also the management costs of that. When you're, you're dealing with a dynamic market, the management costs will include, we know that throughout the course of days, weeks, months, there are opportunities and times where we have surplus and where we have deficits. And so we're buying and selling and trading energy on wholesale markets, which is how we manage those surpluses and deficiencies. And those costs need to be recognized and and analyzed if there are differences between the product options from Bonneville. As part of that analysis, we're going to look at a number of different sensitivities. The the goal in doing that is to make sure we understand from a product selection perspective, what matters. You know, if we have larger load growth than anticipated, or we have wholesale prices are stronger or weaker, we need to understand of all the inputs that go into this model, what are the sensitivities in the outcome and the cost based on if we turn the dials one way or the other with a a number of those different sensitivities? We then also recognize those sensitivities don't always work in isolation. And so we're going to create some scenarios where dials would move together. An example would be we might see a further constraining of resources across the Pacific Northwest. That also might drive wholesale prices higher. And so we would want to look what happens to the portfolio costs under that kind of scenario. There's probably anywhere from two to five different scenarios that we want to test, mainly to check the resiliency of a product option choice that we might recommend. The other thing that we are, we are bearing in mind when we, and this, this is recognized in the business model impacts is we've had some discussion around sort of the future of what E web could look like relative to generation transmission. We are completely vertically integrated utility. And so we have all of those things. The goal here would be to to check to see if any of the Bonneville choices either further restrict or leave open future choices for boards to make relative to other types of resources and business models. And so that's something that we want to make sure, again, to check the resiliency of the decision. This is going to look at the costs that are spread out across the utility and what's the impact or the future ability to to manage those in a different way going forward? And is any of the product options either more or less restrictive relative to to those choices? The kind of the third area that we want to make sure that we're including is I'll call this in in this for this discussion, a qualitative assessment. We we recognize that not everything is about the economics. We we also recognize that the environmental impacts, we have a number of different values as an organization, environmental, social, we also have governance. The board has expressed interest in the past in local control and having a certain degree of of control over our own destiny from a resiliency perspective, from a cost and and social perspective. This is where we want to make sure we're capturing the impacts from a non economic perspective to ensure that we're not creating some unintentional consequences by just looking at at one particular aspect of the decision. And so when we ultimately come to you in June, we will present a recommendation that is based on a combination of qualitative and quantitative assessments and analysis. It will have some data, it will have some modeling results. It will also have some various assessments of certain things that we see in the market, certain qualitative things that we think are more or less aligned. And as part of that, if there are issues that come up that might be misaligned or we might see some risk, what are the opportunities to mitigate those risks? And so whenever you think about a TBL, a TBL can inform a decision. One of the other values of a triple bottom line assessment or what a lot of organizations call ESG assessments now, which is environmental, social governance, isn't just to help you with the decision, it's to help you mitigate some of the impacts of those decisions. And so that will be our intent when we revisit this, when we bring you our final, what we hope is our final recommendation in June. What we'd like to hear from you this evening is any thoughts on things that you would like to make sure we're including in in our assessments, things that you would like to learn more or I want to say less about it, but don't know that there's a less option here. But understand if you're comfortable with with looking at it this way, with the process that we've outlined, with the fact that at some point, likely July, you'll be potentially voting on a resolution that authorizes the general manager to pursue a contract consistent with your direction. And so any comments and discussion that you would have on that, we would appreciate.
Commissioner Schlossberg.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure I have this right. So between now and when we vote to approve the recommendation, we have three, three meetings that we're going to be discussing this.
Probably three and a half, probably.
So I just want to make sure that we have enough time, like as as a board to digest all of this because this is probably one of the biggest decisions that we're going to be making as a board. And for those of us who don't live in this world, sometimes it just takes a little longer to understand everything. So I just want to make sure that we have enough time and even some flexibility if we needed to add another work session or something like that to make sure that we have all the information we need to make the decision. I know that you're going to be giving us a recommendation, so we don't have to build something ourselves. But I, it is a, it is a really important decision and I just want to make sure that we feel comfortable with the amount of time.
I I certainly think that there can be some flexibility. What is not also built into this schedule is any potential direct meetings that you would want to have with staff. So where we can meet directly with staff in two on ones, we figured there would probably be certain times over the next few months where you might want to sit down directly with staff and go through your your list of of, I'll call it an interrogation, but questions on what's going on or your perspective. So that was not built in here. What is a solid deadline is that by July, we have to inform Bonneville what our direction is. So that's the fixed point between now and then. And really, the past year or so since we've, we've been working with the board on this, we have quite a few things to package. I would, I'm going to say at this point, really finish the analysis and package this up in a way that then becomes meaningful for you. And the public, by the way, it's not just for commissioners, but it's also for those who are interested from a public perspective.
Sonia.
Outline timeline looks good. I appreciate the and and also we'll probably need some additional time to dig in. The one thing that I hope to get from this process and that would help me feel good about what we come out at the end is when, you know, we have, we have people that constantly come to us and say, our rates are high and they're looking at sub. And, you know, we have two very different models. And I know we have two very different sizes and scale and all that. But in the most simplest terms, if we could break down, well, if we went with BPA only, what our costs would really look like and how that difference would still kind of be in play because of our size and whatnot. Or maybe we would eliminate a a number of those costs just so that when we do vote on whatever comes out of this decision making process, I feel comfortable knowing that we did what we could for the rate payers to keep the cost down, but also make sure that we are able to respond for our community because I I know that's another one of our. And we call it community. I sometimes think, oh, I should really call that local just because it flows better. But making sure that we can make the best decision. And again, that just that difference in model of all in versus having flexibility and what we get from that. Thank you.
The Brown.
Yeah, I've got more questions than answers than I know what I don't know. You guys have given us a drink out of a fire hydrant, but doing doing a good job of it. But I'm going to need some sidebar things such as we know, we've got AI competing with all this electricity. And we've got recently, the Corps of Engineers decided that it's not efficient to generate electricity with hydropower anymore. So the entire well have a drainage basin is gone. And here we are relicensing a facility for $190 million up to McKenzie. And we've got, we've got contracts with supply that are going to expire during the term of this contract. We've got, you know, some Seneca and and Walterville and things such as that. So I I need to understand how that's all going to work, especially with this rap, this Western Regional adequacy thing, when we have to supply more than we buy to to kind of help cover these shortages. You know, what if these shortages are not what they predict and they're they're greater? And so I, you know, I don't know if it's a one on one or one or two on one, if you just tell me to go away. But I I've got a lot of, a lot of questions so I can understand it better. I'm glad you're on the track you're on, but I kind of need to wrap my head around it. It's pretty all, pretty dominating, for lack of a better term. It's pretty all, pretty dominating, for lack of a better term.
Right.
Well, it sounds like Commissioner Brown has opened up the hood and wants to look at the engine a little bit, which is that there are a number of complexities that interact with a contract decision. And so to both your comments and Commissioner Carlson's comments, I do think it is important for us to recognize the costs and the impacts beyond the contract itself. That's part of the opportunity to look at this from a business model perspective. Now that said, it, it, it took decades to, to build the kind of business model that we have. And a contract decision by itself will not unwind that. But there are aspects that could make that more flexible or less flexible or more attainable. And so those are, those are the questions that, that we want to understand the impact of, as well as a number of the, the regional conditions that, that you mentioned. Bonneville has certain restrictions with contracts. The Western Resource Adequacy Program you mentioned is, is one that has some operating and planning criteria with it. When, when you over or undershoot, there are certain situations that happen that, that you have to address. And so there are contract impacts to that, whether we would be under that obligation or Bonneville would be under that obligation. And so there are differences there. So our, our goal is to not just look at this from a dollars and cents contract perspective, but also the impacts and the sort of the tangled web that it creates with the rest of the things that we do and how we do them. So that's why there's three sides to that triangle. Not just running a model and saying this one's the cheapest and going with that, but to understand the impact beyond that.
Mr. Morris, questions?
No, no, thank you, Dan.
Yeah. So I've got a couple of comments. First, I'll go to the, the timing of information to the board. I, I do think that that's important. I do think two-on-ones are a valuable tool, but I also feel that having the full board present is another valuable tool, because a lot of times I don't know the question to ask and somebody who might have been on the board for 20-plus years might have more knowledge about that question. And if he's not in my two-on-one, I'm not getting that perspective. So I think that there's a place for both of those types of things, because the question that somebody else asks will peak a question that I may want to know more about. So keep that in mind when, when we're moving forward. One of the things that I would want to hear about is in the business model impacts, you talked about flexibility. I would like to know the relationship between flexibility and cost. Because flexibility to me, I mean, the decision that we make as, as this board going into this contract is going to have implications on boards coming up for the next 20 years. And so to me, building in as much flexibility as we can and knowing, or at least knowing what the cost of, of building in flexibility for, for future boards would be some information that would be helpful for me in, in making a decision. That was just something that, that stood out. You know, this is the high level one. We get to dig into the, the scenarios and those types of things, which will be much more helpful. But just going forward, that would be something I would really like to be able to give future boards the amount of flexibility that they have without having a major impact on cost, if that's possible. So those are some of my.
Commissioner Brofsky, I would also mention that the, our plan is to look at this not just from a trade-off perspective relative to flexibility and cost. There are a number of things that are at tension that we're trying to balance. We're trying to balance all of our values, safe, reliable, affordable, environmental, but also where and how the risk is born. So who bears that risk and what kind of risk is it? And I'll give you an example. We talk a lot about the importance of hydro generation. We're always looking at Snowpack, for example, water years. Do we budget for what level of water year? There's, there's a certain risk of production that we have as a generator, specifically a hydroelectric generator. That's a risk that we have taken on by being a hydroelectric generator. If we have Bonneville take on that role, there is, there is still risk. There is contract risk and there is pricing risk associated with the implementation of a contract. And so we have to recognize that different product options will lead us to have to look at not just costs, but different forms of risk and where we feel the most comfortable with that risk falling. So our, our plan is to do that. Our plan is to look at the resiliency of the decision relative to future business models, which is also part of it, and try and decipher all the acronyms for, for everybody who happens to read anything that we put out. So that's the biggest challenge.
I mean, for me, it's like, we're at a point in time and we can make our best guess, right? But we've, we've been at, or not this board, but the E-Web board's been in that position before and thought that the price of energy was going to be something. And then natural gas prices went down and, and the price that we expected didn't, didn't occur. So that's why when I talk about flexibility, it's like, not that we could get out of it, but it's just knowing that we're looking at a point in time and doing our best to look forward. But his crystal ball isn't as clear as it used to be. So, thank you.
Well, and, and Commissioner Brown's crystal ball aside, I think we have tried to make this point from the very beginning. We are choosing between good options. Unlike some of the other decisions this board has had to make, which is a, a choice between bad options, these are actually, the, the Bonneville Federal Resource is an incredibly valuable resource that we have, have priority rights to. And it's, any product that we choose with Bonneville is a choice between good choices. And so that doesn't take the pressure off necessarily. It is probably a two and a half to three billion dollar decision, but it's a choice between good choices.
Great. Commissioner Carls.
Don't want to be a wet blanket on that comment, but I am curious. Do we foresee any other risks or changes that might come from the most recent administration change? And are there any protections that are in place to keep those good options that, that you're aware of? Is, is there any risk there? Thank you, crystal ball.
I, I would say whenever you're talking about federal legislation and there can be potential risks. I do know that historically, there have been opportunities, there have been administrative changes. There has been discussions about privatizing certain portions of Bonneville Transmission. For example, the Northwest delegation has tended to come together in a pretty strong fashion to defend that. This is all based in the Northwest Power Act. So while there is, there is some risk, anytime you're talking about things associated with federal code or support or programs or resources, there is some risk. Bonneville is different from the other power marketing agencies in the sense that they don't, do not rely on federal appropriations. They are rooted in the rates that we as customers pay to them. So they are much different than the other, for example, Tennessee Valley Authority and others, which rely on, on federal appropriations for their funding. Bonneville is not. So there, there are pros and cons and, and some of those will matter in a product decision, some will not. Like I said, there's a choice really between probably some good choices here, but they all come with some degree of risk.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Okay, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for the guidance, commissioners.
All right, we are on agenda item 10, which is a break. Oh, look at who's on our, on our screen. Looks like it's happy birthday, Commissioner Schlossberg. And I believe that there might be people in the house that would like to say happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
We just want to say thank you for attending the board meeting on your birthday and some of your friends thought it would be appropriate to show up. Constituents, absolutely.
That sounds like they've been demoted. I'm not, I'm not quite sure how that works.
So at this point, we will take a, a short break. Let's come back at 7:20. We're going to take 15 minutes. board meeting after our wonderful break. Again, happy birthday, Mindy. Our next item on the agenda is the EWEB City of Eugene Joint Initiative agendas. So as you know, the president and vice president meet on a regular basis with the heads of the the city. Usually it's the city manager, the mayor, and the president and vice president of their city council. So in your packet, there was some ideas of what we might want to present to them. We were asked to see if there was other things added or withdrawn. Obviously, this would lend into Commissioner Brown's talk about the proposed billing for a city service fee. But we can talk about anything else at this time. Mr. Brown?
So I'm being a dark cloud now. I've got an energy sugar high. I've been talking to some counselors and things. There I think there's a concerted effort to give us the maintenance and operation to the fire hydrants. And it's my understanding they haven't been doing this. They have not been maintaining the fire hydrants and they're deplorable condition, some of them, which causes me alarm for community awareness. But are we if we're going to have that discussion, can we have that discussion? Because I don't I want to know, you know, not only maintaining them, but how about replacing them? I mean, what is the condition, age and condition of all these fire hydrants all over the city of Eugene? Are they going to hand us a million dollar obligation to big it up because they're not doing what these communities assumed they've been doing? So before they hand it off to us, I'd like to know what the financial impact, not only the capital outweigh, but the O M. So I'm not totally opposed to it because I've got a pretty good perspective from one of the counselors that used to be the fire chief, and he tells me about some of the friction between the city and EWEB on this topic.
Yes.
Yes. So Commissioner Brown, I I will just say that under most community models, the drinking water utility does manage everything from the source all the way through the hydrant. There's been probably for decades and interest both on EWEB side and the city's side for EWEB to take over ownership, operations and maintenance of the hydrants. Those go back prior to my time. Before we get into sort of a go no go decision, there's a number of things that that we're in process of assessing as well as still need to assess. The the costs associated with capital replacement, certainly on that list, the cost to operate those and maintain those going forward is on the list. What you didn't mention, which is also on our list, is to understand what liabilities we have associated with that today, just as a water utility, but also what new obligations and risks and liabilities we would have under under ownership. So before we go back and talk to the city more about details of of any kind of transaction, there's a number of pieces of details that we feel like we would owe this board before we would come before you and say we we have interest for certain reasons. We do want to continue to have dialogue between management of the city and EWEB on on potential options and details should something look like it's favorable. But before we would do any kind of transfer, we'd come back to the answer to those questions.
Other? Commissioner Carlson?
It's not lost on me that we have a discussion about a rate for fire and a rate for fire hydrants with the same entity. And, you know, we obviously, right now, we have a rate mechanism to pay for electricity. We have a rate mechanism to pay for water. If this were incorporated into our costs of service, what would be our mechanism to pay for it? Is one of my big questions.
Mr. Flossberg?
So we've been having these meetings with the city for five or six years now. And I was the one that kind of got them started. I had really grand ambitions for it. And I don't know what what these joint meetings have gotten us. And so I think we should really think about the purpose of them and what kind of tangible things we can get from them. Something I am thinking about is our joint billing. So whether it's a fire slash general fund fee or something else, the fact that when the city does something like raise their stormwater rates, which they're totally entitled to do, but that it really impacts people who are paying for their utilities. I don't I don't know the answers of like how you decouple that but have the same bill still, but maybe just talking about those things with them. I don't know that maybe they fully understand the impacts of of rate increases. Again, not that they shouldn't increase their rates, but just just the impacts of them. So I think that would be something that's really important. Something that we keep coming back to every single year is the energy efficiency with rental units. And we just haven't gotten a lot of traction with the city in that area. So even if that's something that comes up, I don't know how much we're going to get from it. So anyway, I don't have a ton of suggestions other than like, really, what is the point of this and what? How can we do something collaboratively with the city? I don't I don't know the answer to that. So I'm just kind of putting it out there.
Commissioner Morris?
Thank you, Commissioner. I I in some ways I agree that the meetings with the city of Eugene may be more impactful. I think that there is an energy, I think, both locally within EWEB and in the city of Eugene to take further step. And I think that we are now entering a future in which independence and collaboration is going to be more important than ever. And so I agree that I think we should take a look at these coordinated meetings and see if they're being effective. I would be wary of abandoning or moving away because I think that quote coordination and collaboration with the city of Eugene is of highest importance. And I see what I'm seeing from my perspective, attending some of the city of Eugene meetings and watching the public watching their public meetings, especially with the environmental staff, is a real energy to try to make even just small tangential steps. And so I looking at this at number four of programs of public interests and potential partnerships, I see, you know, weatherization assistance for renters and limited income. And I think that there's there's a lot of I hear I hear this phrase a lot. I don't know how much I like it, but there's a lot of low hanging fruit that exists. But it would require, I think, both EWEB and Eugene to to work on those together. And so I yeah, I'll stop there. Check.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I'd like to echo both your sentiments about the effectiveness and the time well spent. But you know, you push back a little bit, too. I think as a board, we should probably have a discussion because you know that this is mission creep. You know, they you may not be aware that the council redefined what stormwater could be used for. And so now they raised the rates. So now they can use the money for parks operations, not just parks maintenance. So it's just mission creep. And they're getting into things that we bill, and it's still an EWEB bill. It's not a city bill. It's an EWEB bill. And here we go with with the general fund fee. And we have what they've already done with stormwater and see, you know, I'd take a position that that would be my stance is I don't want to get adversarial. I want to work with them. But I also want to stay in our own lane. And, you know, we got the fire hydrants. Maybe that is our obligation, but it's going to be a financial obligation. It's going to be could be millions of dollars. And and rates are going up and they're going up without any of this happening. And we need to, as a board, figure out, are we going to take a stance and say, you know, we need to push back a little bit and say, this is not where we're going because we've got a lot of big big tip items coming up as well. And so I I agree with whether or not, you know, we need to I don't think we need to stop them. I think we need to make, you know, we need to say we need something to come out of them other than just say, we'll see you in three months.
Yeah, I put myself in the queue. As somebody who's attended these for the last year, I would say they are productive. A lot of it is educating our city counselors. The last few of them have been, they're asking us questions that are pertinent to some of the policies that they're enacting and and how EWEB interacts with some of those policies, whether it be their climate goals or those types of things. I also think that with the new leadership that's that's at the city, I think it's very important that we establish or continue this relationship going on. I do feel that there's value for it. There the last few of them, I think it's been more of us presenting to them what we're doing in the community and what we're doing to help push there a lot of their interactive goals. The other thing that has been brought up is the the fact that the relationship between the two staffs is probably in one of the best places that it's been in a long time. I keep hearing that over and over from our staff and from the city of Eugene staff, saying that the staff is working together in a very collegial way. So I think that that's important. One thing that I would say that's going to be, I mean, this is a long list. And the meeting isn't this long. So I would say we need to pick one or two items that we really want to engage with them on because what will happen is we'll start talking about something. And a commissioner will say, what about rooftop solar? And we have to go into the we go into and explain where we're at on some of these things. So I would I would hope that you could give us myself and Mindy some direction on the top couple of priorities on here that you'd like us to lean in on. And then maybe have staff present a memo that can go to them in advance on these other ones so that if they really want to bring it up, they can bring it up. But you know, the one on ones, it really comes down to one or two topics. And I'll let Frank.
Yeah, thanks, President Borowski. I would say that even as an information sharing meeting, it has been productive from the standpoint of of the city understanding generally what we're doing, our priorities. And and in the same way, us theirs. And so there are a number of things that we do already for the city. We send them the copy of our quarterly report, for example, which is a routine that that at some point in the past was a commissioner showing up at their meetings, saying all is good at EWEB last quarter or whatever it was. But we now give them more detail. We also provide updates relative to our work and their climate action plan. But from a staff perspective, there are a few things that we would really appreciate their ongoing support on. And these primarily have to do with large infrastructure projects like support for the Willamette Treatment Plant as we go through various land use issues and opportunities there. The other one is anytime we're dealing with large impactful things related to things like College Hill, for example. And so having their support when we know there's large community impacts, those are the things that that we've asked for and the relationships built at this level where they can ask questions and inquire and understand our position, I think, is incredibly important. So those are a couple of items that I would just kind of reiterate that we need their ongoing support of. Other than that, information sharing has been useful. And really just identifying where their priorities are and where where ours are.
So when we when I look at this list, outside of the billing agent and the fire hydrant issue, you know, some of the other items, I I appreciate we need their support. But I think when we go into these meetings, it would be really helpful to say like, this is what support looks like. You're voting to support bond measures. You're helping advocate at, you know, X meeting, just whatever that looks like, what that support is. So it's as tangible and quick for them to get and understand so that these two, when they go into these meetings, can can really hit it. Please ask the rest of the counselors for this type of support. But I think that would be really useful is to just flesh out what the most direct ask is as possible. And then on those other two items, you know, in the past, we have had joint city council, EWEB meetings, we've had joint, you know, Springfield, you know, sub EWEB meetings. I don't know if that's valuable or not, but it does seem like there's some issues that we would like to raise. And I don't know if that's best with the two leadership directly or if there is some interest in possibly seeing if there could be a joint meeting around the topic because it's so involved for both of us, our organizations.
Mr. Slosk.
Yeah, I want to say I'm not I'm not advocating for stopping these meetings. I guess I think hearing what Frank has to say that those two big issues about the Willamette Treatment Plant and just in general, the the billing structure would be two that I would really support working with the city on. Other ones might arise, like after we do our study about rental weatherization, there might be specific asks there. But I agree with Sonia, if we don't have a specific ask, I think what happens at these meetings is there's a lot of talk, which is important. It's relationship building. But this is going on five or six years now. And I don't know, I can't really name one tangible thing in terms of like rental units, weatherization that's come from it. And I believe that I also use that term low hanging fruit because I thought there must be so many things that we could just like really easily do. And it's just proven to be more difficult. I think part of the issue is the city just doesn't have any money. So anything that requires any kind of funding. So anyway, that's a long way of saying the two things that Frank recommended. I think that those would be great starting points to kind of engage with the city on. And then if something else comes up, we can always bring it back to the board.
Mr. Morris.
Thank you. And thank you for the clarification. My my blood pressure rose quickly. So I I appreciate the clarification. I also want to provide my own clarification of talking about coordination goes beyond my, from my perspective, goes beyond just this fire fee conversation. I know that that's the most immediate thing. But I think I think that in in this next two, four years, I think that we're going to see a lot of different and other opportunities to to engage and work with them. And I I realize that I'm I I presented a thought without providing an example. But one of those low hanging fruits is is I'm thinking back to, gosh, feels like 10 years ago now. But I think it was last November, city staff had presented a few interesting options of of ways to collaborate or ways to just engage with the community. And one of those was like cross communication, information sharing. So EWEB being able to use the city of Eugene's communication tools and vice versa, so that we could share different programs or different thoughts. That's not necessarily what I'm advocating for. And obviously, the details are incredibly important. But that's just one of those not, there's not much of a fiscal, there's not much of a huge impact, there's not much of an investment. But there is a huge community wide impact that that can happen there. I think I would agree with if there's a prioritization conversation. I I I don't see a lot of action steps. I see a lot of conversation that's there. And so the billing agent for the city of Eugene and the the land use planning conversations are those that have direct action and direct beyond just conversation. So I think that those would would probably be of high interest. And I think just as a note, I'm a programs guy, so programs of public interest would would be my advocacy as well. But I hear what what the conversation is of of direct action versus conversations leading to more action. So thank you. Check.
Mr. Brown.
Three and five, the public facilities plan, I mean, that to me, it's it's a no brainer. They're going to support it. And it's going to do the metro plan amendment that changes. And so that's obviously one that you can go in and hopefully have a short conversation with. And then five, I mean, that's forever. And I go back to the history of silt, you know, the ordinance says 3%, but why are we paying 6%? Because it happened and it can't be changed now without a charter vote. And I just, that's why it to me, and it's pressing. It's it's right up right up a doorstep. It's coming up in July. And to have that conversation sooner than later, even though they're going to vote on it next week, something has to happen. And those would be my two priorities for you. And then four, as soon as we have more information, because they've got a pretty good database on the rental pool. And, you know, people come to them with security issues and everything else. Well, weatherization issues. I mean, it's it's easy. If you come to me and say your electric bill is $400 a month in a one bedroom apartment, probably a little bell ringer there. They've got that data and they can help us. So I have three and five to start with and four in close second.
Okay. Well, I think I've got a little bit of clarity. I think that, again, touch on three, dig deep on five. Also, on on number four, I think we could share with them our new goal eight that we just put in what we talked about today and and let them know that that's a priority for our board. And any opportunity to work with the the city would be encouraged, we would encourage that. I think that that would be the direction that I I can see it going. Frank?
Yeah, just I I just want to make a statement that I I I believe I've heard from from the city manager and who has talked with me about it. While while these meetings are informative, we're also very cautious about making commitments on behalf of staff at these, through these conversations. And so I think we need to be careful. We have eight goals. It's going to take a lot to get those eight goals done. And I do see some creeping elegance starting to come in if we're not talking about things that that support those goals. Now, if they're complementary or there's ways to work together, staff, city staff and EWEB staff work well together. And we can we can have those conversations as we outline our action plans. But we also have a lot to do with what we already have laid out on the table. Just and so I don't, I want to be careful that these don't lead to city staff commitments that they're uncomfortable with or commitments that I'm not sure we can fulfill without sacrificing something else. And I just want to bring that to the table just for context.
Okay, other comments or questions? Was there anything specific that made you make that last comment?
Well, I just know that I think when we go into, if if someone says we want some some tangible actions to come out of these meetings, it those tend to be, we have to do things and commit resources to doing those. And 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 that's where I get a little uncomfortable because I can't speak on behalf of the city. And I need to be careful in making those commitments because I've already made commitments to this board through the goals. So it's it's just an area to be mindful of when we go into those meetings that there's there's resource constraints here on on both sides.
Yeah. So and I'm just, I'm just kind of figuring this out in my head. So, for example, on the on the PFSB, just letting them know that this is a land use decision that will come before the policymakers after it works its way through, and it's very important to us. That's not committing resources on them. It's it's letting their policymakers know that there is going to be a policy that's going to come before them that would be advantageous to the community as well.
Yeah, and the value there is soliciting support, right? That's that's, I think, different than implementing a program, for example, would be would be something that would be separate from that.
Okay, just wanted to be clear so that I we we weren't jumping.
And I wasn't trying to ask you for support in the meeting. I wanted them to know what support could look like. So as they go back and talk to other councillors or they go back and talk to staff, they have some idea of how they can be potentially beneficial to the projects. Not that they're committing to it in that moment, but if there are potential issues that crop up, they can let us know about.
All right. Any other discussion on this topic? All right, thank you. I don't think we've got the meeting set up yet, do we?
I have to look at Holly's shaking her head no.
I've got some dates, so there'll be some coming soon.
Okay, we'll look forward to those. And we it may be out far enough that if something else comes up, we could we can always adjust at that point, too.
And President Borowski, I believe that we have on the agenda for next month to sort of reiterate the priorities back to the board and have you actually approve them. So we'll we'll work on the wording for that.
Sounds good. Okay, next item is future board agendas.
Yeah, President Borowski, listening to the the commentary over the last few months, this is this has been something we've been wanting to do for a while is to to kind of take a step back and look at the board agenda report. There are a number of ways that we've we've looked at this. Certainly trying to balance out and prioritize meeting time as a piece of it. Also recognizing that the the goal, the the board provides direction to the organization through not only annual processes like budgeting processes and that are driven by policy, but also through the goals that we work on and and approve at the beginning of the year. And so we have worked with staff to slot those in in different times and different ways, depending on on the goal. There's still a few placeholders that we're looking at for a new goal, for example, I mentioned that earlier. But we try to take a good look at what we're doing, how we're allocating your time, what we're trying to prioritize. Even some of the recurring items, as as much as it might appear like, oh, that's staff bringing that forward. Most of those have been at the request of the board that we want to hear about this on a regular basis. And I'll give you an example of the state of the watershed report. We we've heard that that's an important thing for commissioners and we want to make sure we have the opportunity to talk to you about that. And that's at your request. And so we tried to prioritize the recurring items based on what we thought were your priorities as well. So this is kind of a zero based view of it. And if you have any additional input and comments, we'd certainly like to accommodate those and and work with you on them. And but that that was our intent, just why it looks kind of different from it, from what it did last time. Hopefully, a bit cleaner, although you didn't, you don't see the working copy, which has like 18,000 pages of notes associated with and decoder rings and and other things. But.
Okay, Commissioner Slosk.
I really appreciate you pointing out which ones are recurring, putting it in red. That might seem really minor and kind of dumb. But for, again, for those of us who don't live this all the time, sometimes it's easy to, it's easy to forget. Like, when did we last talk about that? Is this the first time we're hearing about it? And it can be kind of embarrassing when you're up here to like, ask a question that makes it seem like you can't remember that. So sometimes it's just hard to hold all these things together. So just reminding us what's recurring is a lot easier to follow that way. Like, oh, yeah, that's something we heard about three months ago or four months ago. It's really helpful.
Other comments? The one comment that I have is on the March 18th work session. So it starts at five. And we've got our organizational goal three, the energy resource demand study side. And we're given 45 minutes to that. I mean, if we're coming in for a work session, we were just all talking about the fact that these are some deep dive subjects that we really want to dig into. I can see the presentation on that being 30 minutes and
Talk all night if you'll let.
And 15 minutes for us. So I mean, if I'm coming in for a special work session, I want, this is me personally, I want to be able to have a full conversation of that. So I don't know if we might, and Mindy and I can talk about this when we do the the agendas. But it seems to me that that's a little short, considering that we've got an hour to discuss Frank's, you know, executive session. So I just want to throw that out there because I heard it earlier in the meeting. And if we're coming in for a special meeting, I want it to be meaningful and have enough back and forth that it takes some of that out.
Yeah, Commissioner, I I will point out, even though Brian could talk for hours about this, our intent will be to put a lot more into backgrounders for materials before the meeting so that most of, especially work sessions, are about discussion, dialogue, guidance, back and forth between commissioners, and then also some staff involvement. That said, we we could shorten my review dramatically and put more of that time into the work session. I would certainly be in favor of that. I'm just kidding. We we can extend the time on that work session, recognizing that if you're going to come all the way in for a work session, you want to make sure that it's meaningful and lengthy enough to get the the make it make it a robust discussion. So we could, we could extend that time if you need to.
And that's just my my thoughts. I didn't know if the rest of the commissioners wanted to keep it short and sweet. But any other discussion?
I just want to, I know we used to have an unwritten policy about if there's 30 minutes on the agenda, staff gets 15 and we get 15. And that gives us each three minutes, but that's both dialogue, questions, the whole thing. And so just be, make sure that that's still the rule.
Yeah, yeah. And and I think for me, as as being the the board president, I would like to see the work sessions be a little bit looser as far as the discussion goes back and forth, not be, okay, you've got three minutes here, three minutes there. And that's kind of why I was leaning into that because a free free flow of information is what I'm looking for on these on these deep dive topics. So it might be a little bit loosey goosey on a work session so that we can we can get what the information that we need. That's what I'm hoping for. Other comments on future board agendas? Okay, I will work with the vice president and we'll move these forward when the agendas come out. If you have any input, you can absolutely weigh in through email. All right, last thing is board wrap up. We'll start with Commissioner Brown and Gordon on the table.
I'd like to thank Minnie for getting a year older because that was the best cupcake I've had in a long time. So we'll expect that every month. Thank you.
Sonia.
I have just a couple of quick comments, hopefully. Again, just thinking about our risk federally. I'd love to hear from staff or from you. I know earlier we were talking specifically about BPA, but, you know, given some of the events last couple of weeks, do we have any other risk from a federal government perspective and what that looks like? If you have any thoughts now, that's great. If not, I'll look for that in a, you know, future communication. And then, you know, especially around, we have a DEI policy. Does that now put us at risk? Not that I'm willing to get rid of it, but also what does that look like? And then if you have a comment, I'll let you that if you want to hold. And then I have one other comment to make.
Commissioner, I I think there's always risk federally on the the whims of change that can seem like they have occurred for the last 20 years. When changes of administration, the first thing they do is roll back everything the previous administration did. That said, I think we've been really careful about the, for example, grants and applications for alternative financing. We've been really careful to make sure those align with things that we would be doing anyway. And so we look, we aren't chasing grant money, for example, to do lots of R and D type work or speculative work. These are things where we can adjust timeframes to provide rate relief if possible, but not necessarily absolutely necessary. We've we've been careful there. We do have a DEI policy. What what I really appreciate about that policy is very much in the beginning of it. It discusses the the fundamental reasons why we want diversity in its assistance with our creating better solutions. And it really focuses on why we're doing this stuff. And if for some reason there is is federal mandates around how you structure that, I feel pretty good about where we are with our structure at this point. And we do have a DEI update coming up for the board. And so the where we potentially see some risk, and you'll hear more about this when you meet with staff, has to do with how we interact with the federal government on things such as work licenses and the potential for changes in administration and the impact of those of those changes there. So we're looking at it pretty holistically and and often, and probably more opportunity to talk about that going forward.
Okay, great. And then one other thought, now thought, uh, now that we have the new bill system up and running, I know we've talked about it in the past that we can't as easily incorporate our bill inserts and some of the other communication directly into the email. And I'm curious if that will change now that we have the new system up and running because, and I'm only speaking because I have auto pay and don't see it as easily, but um, you know, you have to log in and then you get to see the other email is, are we going to be able to see those uh, more tied in, like somebody who would be getting a bill in the mail would see those communications? Or is that still expected to be separate moving forward?
I don't know all the details, Commissioner. We can look into it. I think what we're um, really trying to do there is we, we
There better not be no cat.
Never been called a cat before. So um, anyway, Commissioner Carson, um, we, we launched the new system. Um, we really are are looking at the, this year 2025 as the continuous improvement year. I don't know if or where that is on the list. Um, we can, we can get back to you on that specifically. Uh, and where we're prioritizing the improvements. And so you, you might hear about particular cases like you did earlier, uh, where that is in the exact queue, I'm not sure, but I know we're managing a, a, a healthy queue of improvements. And that's the reason you go with a standard system. Um, but we can, we can follow up with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ospreay.
Um, on the new bill plate pay system, I just have a question. When we hear from people who are have comments on the bill pay system, what do you want us to do with those comments? I imagine that there's a lot of fine tuning that's going on.
We would love to hear the comments. So if you want to forward those to me, that's great. If they have something specific, we also have the E web answers. Um, E web, whatever that, I'm looking at Jen back there. E web dot answers at e web dot org. If they have general feedback or something specific. Um, if they need assistance specifically, um, your path can be through me and I'll make sure that the right person uh, assists them. But it's, it's helpful to get any and all kind of feedback we can get. Um, and some of those we may know about already, some of them might be more obscure, some of them might be uh, a whole bunch of people share that, some might be really um, not very common. So uh, we'd love to hear the feedback, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I, on the same vein of that conversation, I'm wondering if it's possible to provide uh, just a high level overview of what the most common issues or complaints or challenges our community is facing. Um, I know that we've heard um, from folks who come in with really niche issues, but I've also, in my capacity, uh, have heard just some general challenges of the auto pay transferring over, things just of that nature. And so I'm, I'm wondering if that's possible, just to get some, some type of just general understanding, high level of, not super detailed, but uh, but yeah, just what, what seems to be common challenges?
I believe we have some on the agenda for March, is it? Or maybe part of the, the annual report. So um, I think maybe we folded it into the annual report, but we can certainly give you some, some high level overview.
Okay, and I don't have much to say. I, I did have a customer interaction uh, along the billings and I forwarded through through Frank and staff and it was resolved very well that my constituent was, was happy. Um, so thank you for that. Thank you, staff, for helping out with that. Um, it means a lot when, when I can actually do my job as a commissioner and help keep a constituent and a customer happy when they're not happy. Um, so thank you again for that. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Frank, anything on the wrap up? All right, with that, we are adjourned.